Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founders of Get Oiling, Greg and Amanda Kilwain. Hey guys.
Hey everybody, we're so glad you're here.
Yes, good morning.
We are also joined by the incredible Colin and Julie from our team. What's up y'all?
How's it going everyone?
Hello.
Thrilled to have you here today and go ahead and let us know where you're coming in from, wherever in the world you may be. We're always excited to meet you on these live calls. We host every Thursday at noon Eastern. We have a group of amazing people from all over the world who are all Team Young Living. Everyone who works together and shares, you know, great information with each other in our Facebook group on these calls. And of course, the purpose of this specific call today is to help you really get confident and clear on how you communicate who you are and what you do so that you attract great leads for your young living business. And we've got some exercises that we're going to kind of go over today. And then there are some more in-depth training that you can get into as well in taking this into action. Let's go see where folks are coming in from. We've got Arizona, Connecticut, South Dakota, Philly suburbs. I'm currently in Alabama. We've got also got Florida, B.C., Canada, and also North Dakota here. We are thrilled to have you guys here today. So question, and let's just be honest about this. No, no judgment. Who here has maybe shared or tried to share, wanted to share Young Living? And you kind of felt like you ended up with your foot in your mouth? Has that happened to anyone here? I see a me. Yeah, it's, it's easy to, it's easy to overshare and to kind of get more information out or even extraneous information out that someone doesn't necessarily even need to know to make a decision to follow you, to come to your class, or even to go ahead and purchase products and get started with Young Living. So what we're going to get into today is really the baseline stuff that you need to know and have clear so that that doesn't happen and so that you feel really good about how you're showing up. And this will absolutely inform not just how you show up in person or on a phone call or DMs or whatever. This will also inform what you put on your website and, and what you're putting into your good oiling system that the world can see. So with that, I'm going to get into screen sharing and let's all turn off our video for that. So it looks good for YouTube. What we're going to do is, is we're going to log in to our Get Oiling account. And I'm going to show you exactly where you can find these resources that I'm going to be sharing with you here today. All right, so when you're logged into Get Oiling, and you do have to be a member to do this, what I want you to do is to scroll all the way down to my account settings and then scroll on down to the brand, my business workshop. All right, when you click this, you are going to get access to this course, which will then live inside of getoiling.com/members. And when we go login there, we will have access to this brand, my business workshop. So the first thing that we're going to want to do to get clear on who we are and what we're about is going to be found inside of this workshop curriculum here. And we're going to start with our brand basics. Now you are a brand, you as an individual, and how you show up, wherever that is, is a stamp of your brand, right? Even if you don't have a logo figured out yet, or you don't have a clever name for what you want to call your business, and you don't need one, it's you, your name, you are a brand, right? And so the, the first thing that we want to get clear on is who you are, because that is what you're taking out to the world. That is the thing that people are going to make a decision based off of, more so than anything else. People are buying you before they're buying Young Living. So what are you? Who are you? What are you about? So let's, let's do a little exercise here in the chat, right? So this is just a one-page exercise here. Share with us in the chat, the answer to this question. If there were no obstacles in your way, how would you change the world? Go with what is on the top of your mind, the first thing that comes out. I'd love to hear it in the comments. Let's be bold and share this. What would you do to change the world if you knew that nothing stood in your way? So I know that we have a mission with Young Living to get oils into every home, right? But that's the Young Living brand. So what is your brand? How would you change the world? Alan says empower others. Get rid of toxins and everyday products. Gary, was that, was that something that drove you, that got you out of bed in the morning before Young Living? I definitely want to encourage you guys, when we're talking about what we're about, what we stand for, that we're not trying to create a straight, clear line between your brand and the sale of a Young Living product. There's a really good chance that what you have on your heart and what you feel put here to do is probably something that transcends selling Young Living products, right? You weren't put here to sell Young Living products. Young Living products are a part of a bigger picture for you, right? They help to fulfill a bigger dream for you. So what, what does that look like? All right, so that's the first thing that we want to look at. Now, if you could do one thing every day for the rest of your life, what would it be? And make sure you check yourself. Is it something that you truly love? Or is it something that you feel is expected of you? Or a means to an end? I'm talking about if, if there was, if money was no object and you could do one thing every day and, and you're good, you don't have to worry about making money. What would that thing be? How many of us have actually gone through an exercise like this? Ooh, walk on the beach, I'm here with you. Create, awesome. Awesome, sharing kindness, showing kindness, beautiful. I love it, awesome. So the next thing that you're going to want to do is to reach out to a friend. And you want to ask them, what do you feel like I'm the go-to for? And think about someone who knows you really well and for a long time and not just through Young Living. I think one of the, one of the ways that we can really get hung up and, and make things really difficult for ourselves is when we sort of pigeonhole ourselves into Young Living Brand Partner being our identity, right? It's not your identity. You got a lot more going on, right? And that is what people love about you. So we just need to get in touch with what that is, right? So definitely get a third party sort of, you know, perspective here on what you're the go-to for. And then we want to, once we find out, you know, this is who I am, this is what I love doing, and this is how people see me. The next thing that you're going to want to do is just take a look around, do some competitive research, we'll say. What we're looking for here is, you know, who has been trying to make that difference, right? So answering the, oops, answering that first question that we looked at up here. The changing the world part, there's, there's somebody out there, or maybe a few people who are trying to work to change the world in a similar way that you are. Who is making a difference, right? So what I want to encourage you to do is to find people or businesses, brands, who actually have a fully developed presence. So they've got a website, they've got probably something you could subscribe to, social media, blog, or written content, books, YouTube channel, things like that. And really make sure that you're thinking outside of the box and outside of Young Living for this purpose. And then based on that research, you want to give, you know, get some analysis for yourself, just for your own internal use. I like this, I don't like that. I might want to, you know, use some of this, use some of that. When you think about what you're the go-to for, are there any thought leaders in that space working towards something similar? Does anybody know the answer to that question for them? So when you think about how you want to be changing the world, is there someone with a pretty solid online presence that maybe you follow, who might have kind of lit or paved the way a little bit for you? Who would that be? Really, really good chances is not somebody who's in Young Living, and I really encourage you to broaden outside of just the Young Living world. Mel Robbins, yes, girl, I love her. Yes, awesome. Dr. Green mom, very cool. Yeah, so the, the purpose of this exercise here, you guys, is to understand what you're about. Because if you are showing up, whether it's on your website or on social media or in person, if you don't know who you are, then people can't know you, right? And in order for people to purchase Young Living products through you, they need to not only know you, they need to trust you, right? And if you are wavering in any way in who you are, it gives room for doubt or lack of confidence, right? When you come to the point where you want them to trust you enough to take your recommendation. So this is a building block, foundational building block of how you build authority and trust. And then of course, those things lead to the ability to actually make sales, right? All right, so let's go over to the next one in this first module here in the brand, my business workshop. The next thing that we want to figure out is our who. So we have our who we are, but now we need to know who it is that we're here for. So for us to achieve our goals as Young Living Brand Partners, we do have to serve first. But if we don't know who we're here for, they're not going to know we're here for them, right? There's a Walmart, right? There's a Target, there's a Home Depot, and those are places that are for everybody, right? Those are, those are stores where you can walk in and be any person, and you could probably find a thing that's there that's for you. Well, people don't really have loyalty to the brands in those stores. Generally speaking, people are loyal to whatever the cheapest price is, for instance, right? And that's because they're going into a place that is not for any one person. You, on the other hand, you are here for your tribe. So we have to start understanding who those people are. What does that look like for you, right? So who are you here to help? Let's hear that in the chat. Who is your person that you want to work with? How do they positively identify themselves? Are they, if they're business owners, are they, are they savvy salespeople? Right? If they're moms, are they creative moms? How does your person identify themselves in a positive way? Go ahead and put it in the chat. Health-focused retirees, couples with grandkids. Alan, you see busy, stressed professionals. I would encourage you to also come up with a couple of words that they identify with in a positive way. Ooh, people who take charge of their wellness. Yes, that is some attraction right there. That's some focused, focused attraction. I want to attract people who want to take charge of their wellness. Love it. Creative empty nesters, Paula, that is so spot-on for you. I love it. Awesome. So what's the one thing that your person most wants to figure out? This is something that they're Googling. What is your person Googling or staying up and can't fall asleep because they're thinking about this thing? What's the thing they're trying to figure out? And once you have that, the answer to that question, why would they want to solve that problem right now? Why this goal? Why right now? And then what's keeping them from getting it solved? They have a goal, they haven't reached it on their own. We need to understand that the reason why somebody's going to say yes and stick to Young Living products is because it's tied to an outcome they want, and it's an outcome they haven't gotten on their own yet, right? We need to understand what that is so that we can speak to them more clearly. Now, once we've got this figured out, we are able to put together this powerful statement. And this is the kind of thing that you can, you know, call it your elevator pitch, for lack of a better word. What do you do? This is the answer, right? It's also something that can live on the top of your website. So this is your who I serve. I help my positive identifier for my person. I help creative retirees to get do, be, have, whatever the thing is that they want, that they're Googling, that they can't figure out on their own, so that they can get this thing done without their number one obstacle or fear related to it, right? So once you get this done, you just want to work that statement out right here so you like the way it sounds, and then you practice it, you learn it, you share it, and of course, you put it onto your Get Oiling website. Now, once we know who, now we can break down their how. And basically what we're doing here is defining the beginning and the end of their journey. We want to know what the starting line looks like. We want to know what the finish line looks like. We want to know the emotions and the circumstances, the measurements, if they exist, that maybe are in place for them now, and what they want it to be when they have achieved what it is that they're trying to do, something that you can help them with. And once you know the start and the end, you, you go ahead and set up the steps in between. And the way that I have this worksheet set up is you can do either of these two things. You don't do both, do one or the other. If you are a procedure-driven person, that's definitely something that I am, you must do A before you do B, that kind of thing, then, then you're going to want to list things out in their sequential order, step by step, one by one. If things are a little more flexible, a little more conceptual, then you can list these conceptual milestones. So let's just say, for instance, we need to know these four things, not in any particular order. But if we know these four things, then we can, we can achieve the thing that we want, right? Now going into the final exercise here. And this is where we actually bring Young Living into it. This is where we start to translate and connect who our brand is, who we know we're here to help, how we know we can help them. And then we're going to give credibility to the story by sharing our own, because other people see themselves in stories. That's why stories are so effective. So we need to create a hero story, and that begins with a hero product. This is always a fun and exciting part of this. Who knows their hero product? What is your Young Living product? Just pick one, the, the best one for you, your number one. What is the Young Living product that you cannot live without? Go ahead and share in the chat. What is it for you? Awesome, Thieves Cleaner, yep. Pro Plus Diageus, look at that, yeah, put it in there. Everybody's got one, right? So we start with our product name, and then we got to get all the information out there about it. So how often do you use it? Has it made a significant difference in your life? Share how, be specific, right? So go ahead, for, for your, your hero product, what is the significant difference that it's made in your life? What has it done for you? Because you used to be on step one of your journey, and you maybe even reached the finish line on a journey because of this product, right? All these things connect together. Next thing, really, really powerful option here. If your product is unique to Young Living, highly recommend that you have a relationship with at least one hero product that is something that you literally cannot find a version of anywhere else, right? Ningxia is great for this, obviously. Sulfurzyme is definitely a unique Young Living product, right? It's a lot of, you know, there's blends galore, right? Is it unique to Young Living? And if yours is not unique to Young Living, meaning, you know, you could technically buy frankincense oil somewhere else, it's not going to be as good, but it is, you know, you can get it somewhere else. If no, how is it different, right? If your product is not singularly with a, with Young Living, how is it different from other places? And when you think about your person that we've been talking about, how could this product uniquely help or benefit them? Now you give your testimonial. How has this changed your life, right? Put a testimonial in here. If you're new, use someone else's, borrow one, they're all over the place, right? And then you want to go out and learn everything that you can about it. You're never going to know every single thing about every single product. And that's good because it's really not good for business for you to be the know-it-all, right? We want people to feel confident in being able to find information themselves. Right? So do, do know what you want to know as much as possible about your hero product so that you've got those notes here to share. And notes like this are the kind of thing that you can put into a saved reply and send out to folks who, you know, might want to learn a little bit more about something. And you've already got that information here along with your story. So now that we have our product, we know our who, we know the journey that we've been on, and we know how what we've been through can help someone else, now we write our hero story. So what we're doing here is we're going back to the beginning of our journey and figuring out what life was like for us back then, really digging into the emotions, the implications, the struggles that you faced before you know, before you knew what you know now. If things were getting worse before they got better, what was that like? And then finally, you came to a solution. This is typically where your hero product shows up. How did you get to that point? Did you spend a bunch of money? Did you spend a bunch of time? Did someone show up and show you the way? What happened? And then finally, what is your life like now that you found the solution to your problem? What's now possible for you? What is your trajectory now? Now that you've got this figured out? And so what you're going to do, right? With this hero story, this is going to live perfectly on your my story and photo section of your website. It's also going to be something that you can get into a little greater detail with when you are giving a presentation. It is something that you can use if, if you tell, if you share your who I help and how statement, and people say, well, tell me more about that, right? Then this becomes a story that you can share at that point. All right, so these, these are the building blocks, you guys. And what you're going to do is in the workshop curriculum here, if you haven't done this already, that is this pre-work section. Now, this is the brand, my business workshop. It is something that is free to everyone who is a Young Living, sorry, is a Get Oiling customer. And in here, you have everything that you need, not only to get clear on how you communicate so that you can start attracting great people for your business, but it also gives you everything that you need to set yourself up visually on your website, including all of the templates you need. How many of you guys who are here today have been through this already? If you want to show me a quick, a quick show of hands, let me know. Awesome. Oh, so we've got just starting it, partway through, partway, awesome. Fantastic. Well, good job. All right, new to this, welcome. Fantastic. Well, you guys, this is a great place to start if you haven't done it yet. And, and I highly, highly, highly recommend that you go ahead and get these three things done. Because if you have them done, then you are able to communicate your value, you're able to really reach and connect with people, and you could be brand new to Young Living, right? Or to sharing Young Living, and this will work beautifully, right? This is something that you, you don't have to be an expert speaker, you don't have to be really an expert, anything, because it's your journey, right? Karen, this is, so I'll, I'll show you one more time where to find this. So once you have gone into your Get Oiling account, we go to settings and scroll down to brand, my business workshop. This is going to give you access. And then of course, you're going to go to the Good Oiling Member area. And you're going to get a link in your email after you click that. You're going to go to the Good Oiling Member area, and that's getoiling.com/members. And once you're logged in here, you'll actually be able to see the brand, my business workshop. All right, so now we do have some space open for Q and A. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to go ahead and put those into the Q and A box, and we can talk through any of those questions that you have here today. We are so excited for you guys and welcome back. For those of you who are restarting, we're excited to work with you. And there are some really, really great group training opportunities that are going to be kicking off at the first of the year. So this being our final session of 2022, we are really looking forward to ringing in the new year with you guys and getting off to a fantastic start in the new year. So let's bring in those questions. How many of you, if you, do you have, so for those of you who have been through the brand, my business workshop, and maybe you have that who I serve and how statement worked out, what is that for you? You want to share it? We would be thrilled to hear it. And don't be shy, even if it's in, in process. And of course, the floor is open at this point as well for you, if you have other types of questions. Awesome. Hi, Leanna, you say, I've been so overwhelmed, I need assistance for my brand partners, those interested to do the business. Can you point me to where I should go? So there's definitely some great options out there from our, some of our content partners. I know in Go for Gold, there's definitely some great stuff there. We don't specifically have, because this is kind of a tricky thing, right? In Young Living, you've got, you know, loads of, you know, crown and diamond and royal crown diamonds, you know, folks who have been with the company for many, many years who have their own systems for brand partners. And so there's not one way that works, there are many. But in terms of having a system for your brand partners, what I would recommend for you is to first have a regular call. So using like a recurring Zoom meeting and, and a opportunity to get together, maybe for some accountability once a week. And then for those who are, are interested in doing the business, you do want to point them to some kind of a simple training that helps them to learn how to invite and to do these things effectively. So I would really consult the simplest and most effective resources that you've personally used and just start with a list, right? And give them one thing at a time, but they have to come back to you and share with you what they did with it before you give them the next thing. That's, that's my personal recommendation there. How do I add my picture to the profile area of my website? Great question, Carla. Let's go and take a look. So that's going to be under my story and photo, which is under this website menu here. And right here is where you add your photo. So you just click to add. Great questions, you guys. And oh my gosh, I'm loving this. If you haven't done this yet, you guys head over to the chat. There are some fantastic sharing happening here. Let me see. Jill says, I've gotten seven customers. I just can't seem to encourage people to host in-home parties or just to enroll with me. I just keep it going, just keep it going. You're going to break through, you're going to grow, right? Even, even with the things that don't work out the way that you want to do, those are actually the greatest growth opportunities. Just keep sharing, right? You'll get better and better at this, and it will become more and more second nature to you as you continue doing the good work that you're doing. You'll get better and better at this, and it will become more and more second nature to you as you continue doing the good work that you're doing. So Carla, when you are adding a picture, so here, let me click this here. That's actually going to go to your device. And you can upload whatever your photo is from your device. All right. Let me see. Dr. Brown, I help mature black women find their health solutions so they can enjoy vibrant health without toxic side effects. That is beautiful. And that sings straight to your ideal person. I love it. Awesome, awesome questions, you guys. Who's got more? Who would like to share a little bit more about what you do? How you, who you help and how? Anybody else brave? You want to give a shot? Let us know. So excited to have you here today. And by the way, if you have questions, you guys, you are not limited to this topic of discussion. If you have questions about the system, if maybe, you know, you want to learn about a particular aspect of it, we do have some space for Q and A. A one-on-one help here on our call today. Let me see. Gary says, I show two sides, one for products and one for business. Awesome. I mean, there are definitely ways, there's different ways that you can approach a share. You know, just as as an example, and there are two different ways you can tell your story. I mean, you can share your story from a hero product perspective. But you know, if the hero product is the opportunity, you could do that, too. Oh, this is a good question. Amelia says, when sending texts through Get Oiling, how can I let them know it's from me? So, all right. What is the best way to? So how can I let them know it's from me? Here, I'm going to, I'm actually going to give this over to Greg. And he can actually show a couple of ways that that you can get that done.
Sure. Thanks, Ash. And let me get my account up here.
Yeah. To make, I'm going to go ahead and make you a
Oh, yeah, that'll probably help on it.
It will, it will. Awesome.
Okay, sounds good. I mean, the short answer is it is just as simple as just putting your name in the text, looking back at the question here. So there's two parts, one second here, screen shared. Okay, all right. So here's the dashboard. Whenever you're sending a text, there's a number of different ways to do that. But, you know, one of the easiest ways would be here on the dashboard. I'll just close this for now. There's this send email text, et cetera. So it's just in the content of the message. You would just put that in there. So let's say, I'll just say one, one message, I'm going to write a text. And then right here, you would put, you know, hey, this is so-and-so, or whatever you want to say there. You could absolutely include that right in there. Chat back up here, disappeared on me. Make sure I've got that question. Okay, yeah. So yeah, when sending texts, you just put it in here. So like, you know, it's like, hi. And if you want to, if you're sending it to multiple people like here, and this is a demo account, I've got 95 people in here, if I want to send a text, something like that. You can personalize it, too. So like, it can click this little tag, just a little bonus tip here, for those of you who haven't seen that. So you could say like, hello, contact first name, this is Amelia, whatever, you know, or whatever your name is. There actually is even a my name tag if you really wanted to, but you know, typing your name is probably just a little bit easier. So yeah, you can, that is how you do it. One other note is if you don't have a two-way texting, which you can tell if you do or not, if you click this chat link, and it asks you a question about activating a phone number, then you don't have two-way texting. And that actually, if you don't have it, it will automatically include your name at the bottom of every text message, because without two-way texting, it does come with a central shared, or the text comes from a central shared phone number. So, oh, yeah. Jackie has a nice hint in chat there, too. You could also create an image to attach. This is tips from your name, for example. Some of the great way of doing it, I can show you that here briefly, like if you're sending a message. I'll just say, write a text here. You can add an image to it, and it'll pop up your image library, that you could just say that maybe one of these is your name. You could, and that's all you do to attach. But you can't attach more than one image, too. You can attach up to 10 pictures. And it'll use the same amount of credits as if you have one. So you could include one that's from you, you know, maybe has your name and then something else to go with it. And yeah, that's a good point, Jackie, that by using the image, you don't use up your characters by typing in your name, which is great. Yeah, so I can show you the show you that through chat as well. If you do have the two-way texting setup, this is where you can chat back and forth with people. One second here. So, yeah, so this is, you know, this looks a little bit different on a phone than the computer. This is the computer view. By shrink this down, you'll see it kind of looks more like a, like it does on your phone, where you can go back and forth here with with that. But I'll just go back to this here. Again, the same thing, you would just type it here, you know, hi. This is, you know, your name. You can also attach an image here, too, if you wanted to. If you want to save some characters, you can click on that. One difference with the chat is it doesn't use any of the system's marketing credits, too. So that is, you know, a way to save some credits, but you can only send it to one person. You can only send text to one person at a time is the deal with chat. So, but yeah, that's how you can do it in both ways there. I think there is another, just to show you another way of doing that briefly, like you can, the dashboard is probably the easiest way to get to it. But if you want to be a little bit more targeted about who you're sending it to, I know this, this is probably a little bit more than your question was, but bonus. You can come into my contacts over here, click on my contacts. And let's say you want to send it to, you know, people that you select, you can actually come in here and check, check, check. And then come up here to actions and then say you want to text those people. You can do it that way, too. If you don't, just want to like blast it to everybody there. That's another way of being selective, especially if you're following up with certain people. So yeah, so hopefully that answers your question. I'm happy to share more. If you have any other follow-ups, let me know in the chat or Q and A. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll add a couple other things here as well. I think I saw one in the chat and not in the Q and A. So if you have a question that you want us to address, please do make sure that gets into the Q and A. We've got a lot of folks on the call here today. Now we want to make sure we don't miss your questions. There was a question about whether you can schedule text messages. 100% you can do that. That's not something you do through the chat feature. That would actually be something that you select the contacts that you want to send a text message to, and you can actually schedule to send that, just like you would an email.
Yeah, I just pulled up the screen share again. And scheduling, whenever you're sending the text message, will appear in a box very much like this. It was pretty much the same box, except for chat. Just choose your date and time tomorrow at whatever, 2:25 PM or something, you know, you can just set it at that and then say, boom, schedule, and it's good to go.
Fantastic. Yeah, Jill has a question here as well. This is going to be a little bit separate from those text messages. Thanks. Thank you for that share, Greg. Jill says, I've been doing vendor events and I'm going to a health fair in January, planning on making some DIY bath salts with Young Living oils as well as thieves' cleaning solutions to sell. How do I then get others to enroll? So we did a training a little while back, and it was focused on working with realtors. That would be one that could be really helpful for you and you know, kind of figuring out a way to point someone to information that they can kind of receive by scanning a QR code that you put onto a product that you are selling or giving away. But I think that where we're talking about vendor events, and we have lots of trainings on this on our YouTube channel, I encourage you to check them out. The most important thing you can do at a vendor event is get names. Right? Get names and emails. And from those names and emails, you'll have conversations. And those conversations is how we move toward enrollment. It's much less common that we would sign someone up for Young Living from a vendor event table than it is for us to start and engage in conversation with someone at a vendor event table, and then have a reason to continue that conversation with them later. Our enrollments come from our relationships, right? And so relationships with, they take time to build. And so the most important thing you can do at a vendor event is to start new relationships. And getting others to enroll, really, it's going to happen because someone had a product experience, and even more likely because someone had a problem they wanted to solve. They saw you as someone that's capable of helping them solve it. And they said, yes, when you offered to show them how. Right? So I would I I would spend more time getting people interested in conversations and chatting with you about how you can help them get what they want, which is probably not just some bath salts or cleaning solutions, right? If we can help them get what they want, and they know that, they're going to want to enroll. And it's going to be a no-brainer for them. I hope that helps. A raffle is a great idea, and you can, you can actually set up a raffle virtually using a landing page in kiosk mode in your Get Oiling system. And again, just please make sure you check out some vendor event trainings on our YouTube channel. We've got a lot of them that that can help you in a lot of different ways, get you some new ideas, et cetera. So you can really maximize the time and effort you're putting into those. Awesome. Do we have any more questions? So excited that you guys are here today, and Greg has put the vendor event, some vendor event trainings in the discussion here in the webinar chat as well. Awesome, awesome questions, you guys. We are so grateful to be a part of your Young Living journey, and this has been really a great year, and we're looking forward to an even better one next year. What is your goal for 2023? What do you want to get next year? What do you want to see happen next year in your business that you haven't seen yet? Anybody want to share what that is in the chat before we go? What is your number one goal going into 2023? We just got a couple days of this year left. Do you have your intentions set? Silver by July. Love it, Sharon. That's great. Awesome, you guys. So excited. Hmm. Nozelle, I'm not really sure about that one. That question, I just saw in the chat there. You might want to reach out to us so we can explore that together. Oh, such great, great goals here, you guys. Well, we are so thrilled to be a part of this with you and to help you get this done. This, of course, closes out 2022 for us, and we are so thrilled to see you again next week, next year. We will be back at the same time. Happy New Year. We'll be back next Thursday at noon Eastern time right here to help you grow. So we are so thrilled again to be here with you. And we're looking forward to a great year with you next year. Everybody have a great week and a happy new year.